Oh, are we recording? I'm sorry.
You're good.
Call meeting to order start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out tonight. We'll start the meeting with the approval of the agenda, so any additions, deletions or corrections. I've got a couple, so I've got an addition under the attorney's report, L1, a closed session for litigation update. Need to add.
My administrators report.
Sorry. I really stopped that.
Was your computer reading the agenda to you?
Yep, must have been.
I didn't know that was a thing.
The new computer, I'm still learning how to use it.
I don't know what to say. I can't compete with that.
You need words to it than yours.
I'm not worried. I might just try it. Yeah, just reading it off to me.
Just made the mayor useless, you don't even need to be, he's just reading to you. Chris is speechless.
We're going to get all the way through it.
It's almost over.
Oh, got through it, okay, sorry.
All right, that's fine, now we've been read the agenda. Without that, there's some adding L1, the litigation report for the closed session with the attorney. Under personnel K1, I'd like to remove K1 right now. I had some discussions with the attorney, we're going to wait and do that all at the same time with negotiations, so we do it all.
Oh, are you, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So remove K1. And then I need to add somewhere here our motion for the new city administrator.
Should that be under personnel?
Personnel, or should we move to the front so Liza can get going?
We can.
I'll just move it under mayor's report.
Perfect.
So I'll add under mayor's report, city administrator job. Nancy, anything else?
No, I'm not aware of anything else. Well, did we pick up? We don't guess we did.
No, remove F, all of F, G.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And remove G, yeah.
Okay, so F1 and G1 will also be reviewed. And we're waiting for those to be completed. Anything else, Nancy?
No, not that or anyone else.
Okay.
Just that one thing I missed to do.
I'll put that under the report.
Thank you. Nothing for me.
No. Okay, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I'll make that motion. Stand for a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Bonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, Linda. Onto the consent agenda. Excuse me. Everything is in your packet there, are there any questions for Nancy on that? That's pay request, those were all in there, so all entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, I'll go up second.
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Visitors that don't have any cards, pledge anything?
No.
Onto the mayor's report. Janet asked me here if we can just, if something gets added to the packet after it's originally put out, if you could just shoot us an email so we know to look at the packet again.
Oh, okay, for the insurance.
Yeah, that way if something gets added.
Or even engineer, anything, it's just, you forget to look and then you'll look again, but
Sure.
It's just, it's nice to look sooner.
Yes, I'm just, and it's a holiday too.
Yeah, that's just things happen.
Nope, it's just making things better.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, and then under the mayor's report also, we added the city administrator position. So we've been through this process since the beginning of August. Like to thank Liza, David, Dr. and Associates for helping us out with that. Provided a good pool of candidates. We had an opportunity today to interview four candidates for the position. We took them on a tour of the city, the school graciously used one of their buses, they didn't charge the city anything for that, they did that volunteer, the superintendent was kind of a tour guide. He asked me to help be the tour guide, but if you don't mark it all, he did most of the talking.
All.
Kind of, most, all the talking, so it was good. Some people got a chance to go around, see the city. We had lunch at the Hubbo House during the chamber meeting, which we engaged the chamber to then help us, you know, to offer for them to provide us feedback, they got a chance to ask questions. I have to say that the chamber really surprised me. We had a lot of good feedback from chamber members as far as just one sentence things or words here and there, that they actually listened to the answers and had some pretty good feedback from pre-decisions, so since you're in the chamber, if you want to share it with them, I'm very pleased with the feedback we got from the business committee. And it was interesting to see as a councilperson, how people, whether they've been in the community for a while or are new to the communities for a couple of days, to go into a group of people and see how they interact with people. So that's part of the interview process, it was good. And so not only did the candidates have a chance to make a first or a next impression, the chamber also had a chance to make a first impression on everybody else too. So I think the town did a pretty good job with that. Traveling around town today, the town looks pretty good. Got our things we're working on in construction, looks like it's kind of maybe, well, can't pave anymore, the plant's closed, so we got done what we got done, and so it looks pretty good. So that being said, the council did in-person interviews, forty-five minutes with each candidate. We deliberated for a while, had a couple different votes. I came down and this is the motion. I'll make this motion that we're going to offer the position of the casting city administrator to and negotiate the terms of employment with Timothy Hibish, who's the current city administrator in Blue Earth. So Liza will contact all the candidates and formally like to thank all the candidates for applying.
Yes.
Liza went out of the way, she did a good job, we had four candidates that we wrestled, we told her we promised we wouldn't physically wrestle when we were trying to decide the final person, but she said thank you. But no, it was four good candidates who, I think, as the five of us sat here and listened to everybody, after you listen to each interview, like, okay, 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 and then you got the next one, it's like, okay. It was, it was a great process, so thank you very much for giving us four quality candidates. So Liza will then go contact the candidates, let them know. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? No.
Can you just reiterate what you said?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, Linda. We will then, personnel committee, which is Dwayne and myself, will be reviewing the contracts and some of the negotiation issues. Liza then will help engage us with the proposed candidate to, and see if we can get that hammered, I'll brought back to council for approval. So any questions from council? Any more direction for us, that's, are you going to be awaiting, Dwayne and I, to get to you then with something to say here?
Yes, so I will anticipate a phone call or email tomorrow, just to share with me the terms, I can start those discussions and get back to you as well, the personnel committee, if there are any questions that the, that the final list may have for you. And then I can help flush any of those comments, questions back and forth, and then get a preliminary signature on that agreement, and then that agreement would then come before the council for formal approval, adding to your council meeting. Does that sound good?
Perfect, thank you very much. Thanks for all your time too, and coming down to travel, see if I can get you home.
It's my pleasure, it's really mine, it's wonderful working with everyone.
All public forum, my BSS with the cards, we can, we still don't have any cards for that. Onto all the way down to the administrators' report.
Well, so we have put out a request for proposal for bids to be the agent of record, and what that means is that we pay the agent directly for the services with the League of Minnesota City Insurance that we have, and did, this particular bid did not include work comp, because the league was paying them two percent directly as a compensation for our work comp premium. So this was just related to the other liability and property, liquor insurance and things like that. Well, every time we think that, we're putting out in a clear and direct manner, not necessarily sold, because we got three bids back, we had some very nice respectful declines, because, you know, they, they wanted to provide their own insurance coverage, or who knows what. But the fact that we got three bids back and they proposed their fee to be in a different format from firm to firm, I had to kind of convert it. So that third page was what we've shown when we opened the bid. So, you know, we needed to record what the bids were, well, lo and behold, one was in percentages and the other two hundred dollars, however, North Risk said, this is our fee, but we're not taking any work comp fee, we're not accepting the two percent, this is our fee for everything. So we had to kind of convert it, and that's what that other page is, and I'm sorry, some of you didn't get it till yesterday or possibly today. So that's what we tried to do. So we had the four percent, three and three for the one insurance agent, we had to kind of convert that into dollars, so we used this year's premium. So what else have we got to go on? We don't know what next year's premium is yet. So we calculated that across at the percentages and then added the two percent work comp. So the totals, you can see there, and again, they're different year to year, so we decided to add the three years total as hopefully a guide to help us. When we've done this before, we've, we've used the phrase, you can bid up to three years, well, we had some that only bid one year, or two, or three, but the case was just that it was real clear who was a little bitter with the three years that we had attached, so we didn't run into that, but it just makes it easier, the fact that they bid for three years. So then the second bidder had their fee listed by year in dollars, we added the two percent, so it came to the total amount per year for that, that insurance firm. Again, we added the three years across to kind of get an idea of what the total would be across three years. And then the last one, they put forward their bid for the agent of record fee, but they were the ones who indicated that they would not be taking the two percent work comp. So their total is what their, their bid was, and we added that across for three years worth of agent fees. So that's kind of where we're at. Now, a council would like a rebid, I don't know if dollars or not, or if you've got the conversion, which is favorable to them, because, you know, the premiums for property and liability are likely to go up, but we had to, we had to do something to kind of be able to compare apples to apples.
So, question for you.
Yeah.
So the two percent work comp, so on the third one there.
Yeah.
Where it says zero, they say they're not going to take that.
That's right.
Fine, they don't have to take it, does that lower our premium by that two percent?
Um, whatever the premium is, they pay.
Well, do we, so
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So company number one has said, we're going to bid four percent, plus we'll take the two percent on our work comp policy, which is two thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars for the work.
My understanding is it would, so there's an additional benefit to that.
If our premium goes down by that twenty-six hundred dollars. Okay, so what I'm looking at is what's out of the pocket of the city and what's going to be the benefit, the financial benefit to the city.
Well, the one, if my understanding is correct with that, then it would be the twenty-six hundred extra, as because it would be reduced
Yeah.
from our premium. So even greater savings.
Okay, maybe I'll just have questions on that, and all. I just, I want to, I would want to verify that.
Okay.
That if somebody says, hey, I won't take the two percent, that's great, then the city should get that savings on the policy, because if they don't, then it really is costing us that twenty-six hundred dollars whether they take it or not. If you say, I want to make sure that
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, you're right.
If I say, if I'm the agent, say, yeah, I don't, I won't take that two percent of the work comp, but the city's premium stays the same.
I understand what you're saying.
Then technically, that's costing the city.
So, how about I check and we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
Can you do that?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're comparing three different bids that are all
You're right, I see what you're saying now, yeah.
Because the other two are pretty clear, here's our percentage or dollar amount.
Yes.
The twenty-six hundred becomes irrelevant, our premium's going to be the same whether they take it or not.
That's right.
Because then they can take it, still just get our, our premium.
You're right, I bet.
Your premium.
Yes, you're right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yeah, you're good.
Okay, engineer, just in time, perfect. You're up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear somewhere?
Do I want to have your computer read the agenda?
Can you please don't? I'm surprised you didn't click that button, else I didn't read all that.
Yeah, I
That's what I'm always worried about.
I know.
I can't even tell you which button I hit that I had to do it. Tell us is great when you understand it.
I won't guarantee it won't happen to you. Let's just close it up. Seconds.
Perfect. All right. Ready? You bet, you're up.
So one thing on the agenda tonight, Highway fifty-seven reconstruction updates are more of a general discussion tonight. And what we're looking at discussing at potential roundabouts at Highway fifty-seven and Casado thirty-four and Main Street. Just take a big step back on where kind of we're at. We've started this reconstruction project with Minnetonka, we have an existing agreement in place. The city, WHKS, is leading the design of the project, so we're kind of bringing stuff forward to Minnetonka for approvals as we go along here. So part of that process, we did have one public meeting, and one of the people in the public brought forward that, hey, maybe the stoplight doesn't need to be at Main Street, maybe it needs to be at thirty-four, because that intersection is, from a traffic perspective, more of a problem than probably Main Street is. So it kind of got me thinking at the time, well, maybe we need to look at that a little bit closer. So as we kind of brought through the design for, to Minnetonka, one of the things we talked about was, is the signal really warranted there? And that's a traffic engineer's term for, do we need a stoplight there now, that's what a warrant means. So then we started talking about all the other criterias within why we put signalized intersections and roundabouts in certain locations. We ultimately concluded that maybe we need to talk about this a little bit more. And when I say talk about a little bit more, what I'm here tonight to bring to the council, is this something, we're in the very preliminary stages of Minnetonka, we're potentially continuing to discuss these roundabouts, are cut it off and go back to original scope of the project, which included replacement of signalized intersection at Main Street and fifty-seven, pretty much as it is now. And leave thirty-four essentially the way it is now, it's a skewed intersection, it's a little bit of a, intersection slightly elevated from a traffic crash perspective, and it's kind of tough to draw, drive the trucks around there, and it's not real nice for pedestrians. But we didn't really have any other improvements other than this potential roundabout here to kind of make that intersection better. So again, that's what we're looking for direction or thoughts in the council tonight. Is this two thumbs up, we need to do this, we need to continue to do it, let's continue to talk to Minnetonka, the county, about implementing this and continuing the discussion. Is it a so-so thumbs up, or is it a thumb down? Two thumbs down, we don't want to do this, that's what we're looking at tonight. Any questions on that? I don't, I don't want to, we're not here to say we're doing this, we're not here to say we're not doing it generally, we want to just talk about whether or not this is something we want to continue to pursue and talk about. Because it's going to cause some problems from our schedule perspective, our design perspective, funding perspective, we have maybe potentially the county involved, Minnetonka involved. And I don't want to spend any more time on this if this is something that we don't want to proceed with from the council level. So it's Minnetonka asked me to bring it to you tonight to kind of feel everybody out, so. Any questions on that?
Just a question, I'm not a traffic person at all, but do you think the traffic is worse on thirty-four where it crosses, Old Thirty-four we're going to call it, than it is at Main Street, because Main Street, Main Street has a signal, so traffic's more controlled, you're able to have, you're able to go east and west there because there is a signal. Where on Old Thirty-four, you can sit there forever and ever and ever because there is no signal. So I think, to say, oh, it's better here than there, you don't need a signal there anymore.
You'd have that same problem at Main Street if you get rid of the signal.
If you get rid of the signal, you have the same thing, and just, my first blush was, can we drive our big ladder truck around that as they leave emergency services, our trucks, and then it looks like we lose a half a block of parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah, so, and then in the council packet, I have a couple little conceptual drawings that we didn't define, we just quickly put them together, so we brought them to Minnetonka and obviously bring them here tonight. And then we have another document, conceptual discussion points, is kind of what it's labeled here, in the council packet, that wasn't put on Friday, it was put on Tuesday morning when staff got back, so. And that talks about some of these items, maybe we'll just kind of go through that.
Yeah, I guess I haven't seen it before.
Yeah, I apologize, maybe we'll go through that and then we'll answer maybe Chris's questions, kind of as we go, or we'll go back to them, so. So maybe I'll just talk off that discussion point. So again, MUTC warrants, that's the traffic engineer's term of, is it needed or not, is it warranted? And ultimately, we did a intersection report engineering study at Main Street, that was part of our project, and said, yes, a traffic signal's there, it's warranted. We didn't necessarily look at a roundabout there because it doesn't really fit as tight in there, but we'll talk about that in a little more detail. So really, with that said, a roundabout would be warranted at Main Street for sure. Same thing at thirty-four, to Chris's point of having that gap in traffic, that is something that is a warrant, there's multiple warrants on why a signal or a signalized intersection would be warranted, and that is one of the reasons. What we experienced at thirty-four, there's a continual run of traffic, probably right now, coming off of Highway fourteen from a lot of the commuter traffic, but there's not gaps on fifty-seven for people to jump off of thirty-four to get on fifty-seven or the southbound. So that really would drive a lot of the warrants to have a signalized intersection or a roundabout at thirty-four in addition to fifty-seven. Some of the ADP projections, that's the volume of traffic on the road. Ultimately, we think the roundabouts would work there, the roundabouts can accommodate the current level of traffic on fifty-seven, thirty-four and Main Street, with some projected growth. Safety, safety is one of the real reasons why roundabouts have kind of been brought over the states, they're pretty busy, are pretty well-used in Europe. Really, we see that accidents are less severe, there's a lot less conflict points, there's a signalized intersection, a lot less rear-end collisions, so that's why roundabouts are really gaining support in the community, and Minnetonka's really been receptive of them. Jumping on to the railroad concerns, one of the things that we do have to consider here is, a signal may be better at Main Street for the railroad, because the north and southbound traffic at fifty-seven has stopped. The Main Street traffic is allowed as a continuous green to clear that intersection if emergency vehicles coming from the fire station there to the east, they're allowed to proceed down Main Street. A roundabout could have a potential with traffic entering that roundabout and stopping in the roundabout, and then in theory, I hope that they would clear that intersection, but that could be a potential possibility of a negative or con on having a roundabout there. So that's something that we did address in the intersection report, and we, we did talk about potentially mitigating it with a do not block the intersection sign with a discussion, so that's something if we move forward, the roundabout would be something that we would want to look at, implementing or continuing that discussion about how that affects the railroad. Thirty-four from a railroad perspective, it really isn't on there, because it's far enough away from the railroad intersection. Truck traffic can be a concern. You can see we have proposed in here at Main Street is what we call a mini roundabout. Probably, may or may not have actually gone through a mini roundabout. It's a little different than like the roundabout on the front of the road in Byron, but there's a center island, and then there's an apron, that trucks ultimately, their trailers ride up on that apron as they, as they go around the roundabout, and they'll actually kind of go over the center core of that roundabout. In a mini roundabout, the trucks would actually, their trailers would track right over the top of the roundabout, because they're less, less of the diameter, smaller diameter at the Main Street intersection. At thirty-four, we're actually considering both options of a traditional single lane roundabout with that truck apron and then a mini roundabout. So we need, we haven't quite worked through what, if we can fit a full-size roundabout at thirty-four, so that's something we'd want to work through, we're again, thumbs upping this tonight. I would prefer a traditional roundabout with a full-size apron at thirty-four, but we have some right-of-way concerns that we have to work through. So that relates back to truck traffic, again, they can navigate over the mini roundabout. Minnetonka has installed some of those mini roundabouts in some conditions and has some videos of the trucks traversing them, if we want to, again, proceed tonight to look at that and how that may look for the truck traffic, along with the ladder truck, and it has some issues now even getting out of the fire hall on the Main Street, even scraping on that roadway where we have grades on roads and a relatively steep slope coming out of a, a fire station, so we have some issues there that we have to, to work through along low-boy trucks. My general thought on Main Street is not going to be a lot of truck traffic at Main Street. Thirty-four, a little bit of a different story, there's some more heavier traffic coming from the elevator, construction companies on the east side of town, so there's probably more truck traffic there, so I'd be less receptive of a mini roundabout there for that reason. But that is one of the things that Minnetonka, the WHKS, would bring into this consideration, the design of a mini roundabout there. With that said, even, even truck traffic at Main Street, even when you go to the signalized intersection, they basically can't make those turns with a full-size loaded over-the-road tractor-trailer. So that really doesn't change the discussion at Main Street. Thirty-four, we would, again, be putting it kind of back the way it is now, it functions, and trucks do navigate thirty-four, so we want to perpetuate that and integrate that into the, into the roundabout design.
So Brandon, the larger roundabout that you talked about with semi-trailer traffic, do they easily navigate two hundred and seventy degrees coming in a roundabout? They would go up on the apron, is that what you're saying?
On a full-size roundabout?
On the full-size roundabout?
Yeah, I think, yeah, they could, because they go the other way, yep.
Well, what I'm thinking is, we're going to have northbound traffic for farmers going to the elevator with their semi-trailers.
And westbound thirty-four.
So they're going to have to go two hundred and seventy degrees around that roundabout to get to thirty-four. And what sort of, to avoid that, they're going to end up, we'll be pushing them into neighborhoods, which I would just as soon avoid. So that's what raises my concern.
There's a roundabout near Pine Island County, three and five, and I'm assuming that's a single lane, like you're projecting here.
Correct, yep.
And there is semi-traffic that goes north and ends up going west through there, and they have no troubles, other than you, if they're inexperienced, you'll see their wheels come up on it a little, but they go around there without issue.
And I've watched them do it at the one in Byron, right next to McDonald's, I've watched the track, and I actually saw the thing go up on the apron, I thought, that's what that's for, that's very clever, but it, they didn't have any problem coming from fourteen and then taking a lot of
Yeah, I, I understand the argument, but in those two locations, they have no other choice.
And it's a ninety-degree there, you'd actually be going north in two hundred and seventy.
Where they could turn at Casey's, or they could turn at Domino's, ended up going through our neighborhood with their semi-trailers to get to the elevator.
But if you have ever driven a semi, they won't go through residential for the reason of parked cars, they would rather go through I've seen enough would rather go through a roundabout.
I drove a semi.
So, but, and I would rather not have to mediate around parked cars.
If they can avoid something they don't want to go through, they'll go through the residence. Yeah, so I, I just raised that concern, no. We've still got miles to go on this, no pun intended, but, you know, I, I just want to bring that question up.
Yeah, so one of the things that, that we do from a design standpoint is, we actually run a program that shows a truck navigating that turn in different sized vehicles, you know, UPS truck compared to a over-the-road fifty-three-foot trailer. So that's one of the things that we would do when we work out the geometrics of the roundabout, how that all works. And with that said, maybe I'll point to the mini roundabout here, on that thirty-four, and that skew at thirty-four being an offset, not ninety-degree intersection, skewed intersection. Even those right turns, which are problematic now with the truck movement, you can even see that we have pavement for off-tracking that's labeled.
Yeah.
And that would be when a semi on east or westbound thirty-four navigates the tight right on the fifty-seven, they're actually tracking up and over that curb and gutter, which is, you know, not ideal, but it's one of the pros and cons that we work out when we're looking at roundabouts, and then we have a pedestrian facility that'll be over there somewhere, that's one of the concerns that we have, and one of the items that we'll, we'll work through. Dwayne, maybe to your point, is when we run that two hundred and seventy degree turn Maybe to your point is, when we run that 270-degree turn, we would look at that truck navigating the roundabout to go westbound on 34, for example, and look at that movement to make sure that they're not clipping that car that would be, you know, at the stop mark at 34. So, those are the things that we would work through.
Okay.
But, to that point, that's why I would prefer to do the other roundabout, the more traditional that you see in the area.
Yeah.
With that, with that, we still have that tight right, that pavement off-tracking on those tight rights from 34 to 57, but that ultimately gives a larger radius to run those trucks out.
Yeah.
So, that is more, that's why they're used if you have the right-of-way. I think that might be part of, maybe what I propose, is part of the, if the city's receptive of this, but maybe not real receptive of the mini roundabout at 34, that we say, we are receptive of this with the condition that we can get a traditional single lane roundabout at 34, that the mini probably just doesn't fit. Just tossing that out as a discussion point.
And this would be no additional, so we have the, kind of the initial cost estimates for this project, or we're replacing for infrastructure and the state's money they're putting in, so adding the roundabout wouldn't add any additional cost to the city?
We haven't worked that far with MINDOT, I didn't want to continue down that road, but we said, "MINDOT, the city's going to ask us this question, we need to resolve that," and they said, "Go to the city first and see if this is even on the table, and we'll continue that conversation." So, we're already working those channels, so I don't have that answer yet, I wanted this discussion to take place first, and that might be part of your thumbs up, thumbs down, as if this is a city cost.
I would say no additional cost to the city, and it doesn't alter the 2021 plan of getting it done, I'd be interested to see what it looked like at that intersection. On Main Street, I have no interest in it at all.
Right. Can the stoplights stay and the roundabout be on 34?
I want to say no, but from a traffic engineer's perspective, having a slug of vehicles at Main Street going through a roundabout isn't necessarily ideal for my general conversation, but I don't want to say no.
So, is it both or nothing?
Eh, I don't know, I want to talk about that a little more with the traffic engineers in MINDOT, how that may work out. One of the great things of roundabouts is that traffic is continuing, we don't have the slug of cars anymore, which can be, if you...
Until a train goes through.
If you have, well, the slug of cars now would help, right, at 34 to get us on there, but if we have a roundabout, it's nice and contiguous, and having slugs of cars go through a roundabout isn't necessarily ideal. Roundabouts are more receptive of having continual traffic to get them in.
Right, right, I get that.
So, we slug them up at...
Once the train goes through, they're going to load that roundabout up, because legally, they don't have to, even if you have a sign, "Do not block the roundabout," you're going to see people blocking that roundabout.
So, I would agree with your comment that signs don't necessarily have a strong effect on behavior, unfortunately.
So, how do people then cross Main Street? Because at the corner of Main Street, now, half the parking for Main Street's on the north and half's on the south, if you park on the city parking lot at the corner of Main Street by Liquor Store, and you want to go over to the baking or pick a place, get your hair done on the corner of Main Street, main image room it's called, right now, you can go to the stop signal that says, "Walk, walk, walk," you have the right-of-way to walk, but a roundabout, there is no right-of-way, you just have to wait for traffic that's continuously going.
No, a pedestrian has the right-of-way within a roundabout and a legal roundabout, and if you look at the drawing there, we show the crosswalks being hatched in there. So, that's one of the advantages of having a roundabout. It's probably more, more so at 34, it's more receptive for pedestrian movements, so 34 intersection's long, it takes a long time to cross that, there's a couple of islands that we may have to look at removing due to some turning movements, so the more that we can get these pedestrians in a shorter distance, that's really an advantage of the 34 roundabouts. Now, with that said, to your point, Chris, at Main Street, we're not necessarily reducing that, and there is pedestrian, and there's pedestrian movements built in within the traffic signal, there's protection already in place and would be replicated in a new project with pedestrian movements, so there's much of an advantage if we went the roundabout at Main Street, but we still would definitely be considering pedestrian rules within that roundabout.
One concern that I have, if you, if we have to remove the traffic signal in order to do the roundabout at 34, it is very difficult to see past the edge of the corner where Abel is, if you are coming west on Main and trying to either go straight or go left, it's very, very difficult to see around that building, to see if there's oncoming traffic, which I think, I mean, in addition to the train tracks, is that one of the reasons that the signal's there to deal with?
Maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this tunnel may help because it'll get you out into the intersection a little bit more if you're westbound on Main Street.
But that was an if we lived around the roundabout at 34 and were forced to lose the traffic signal.
Yeah, and again, I don't necessarily want to commit to that, and if that's something I could continue to pursue and talk about, I just know from a traffic engineer's standpoint, the general answer is, they must play real well, nice, together, I think, so.
Sure.
But it's, it may be worth pursuing, because again, I'm really excited about the full roundabout at 34 early on.
I do, too. I like that.
I'd be in favor of the roundabout at 34, but keep the signal at Main Street.
Yes, I agree.
If it's a deal breaker that you have to do roundabouts both places, I'd have to really be convinced, and they'd have to find these 25 more parking spaces.
Not only that, they need to prove that they can keep that open when the train goes through.
For the fire department and anyone else else.
And then it should be funded by somebody else beside the city, and they start spring of 2021. Is that demanding or is it flexible?
Well, you have to start somewhere.
Well, the reason I'm, the reason I'm kind of, I mean, we just scheduled for 2021, and it's our next step in our street reconstruction projects as far as the infrastructure early round. If this gets pushed back a year or two because we're now going to study, I'm not, before you work, we're going to study roundabouts, and this is going to be great, we're going to have that many more water main breaks, we're going to have that much more backup, we're going to have that much more problems. It gets worse and worse, which is going to cost us...
More and more.
More. And, I mean, if they really want to study these roundabouts, 34 is great, I just, I'd have to really be convinced about Main Street, with the lots of parking, vehicles through there, people crossing the street.
Fire Department.
Fire Department, the whole thing altogether, I can't see it taking us more time, and it definitely should not cost us more money. We're out of that, we're out of money, so, we're done.
Because 34 is a county interstate, so...
Yeah, you're right, county, 34, and state highway. With, really, we had a lot of concrete in that intersection to replace anyway, but the problem with that full-size roundabout, it's been expanded, you know, going a half a block to the southeast and to the west, so, really, if, even with the mini roundabout, we're going to cost it for a signalized, probably a wash at Main Street, from a cost perspective, I don't have the detailed stuff, but just thinking that a signal's 200,000, we didn't add 200,000 in the Main Street intersection, but 34 is going to expand down the county, down 57, so...
We already have a signal, we got paper on it.
Yeah, we got updated, it's got to be replaced as part of the project, that's the kind of plan. But, just one of the next roundabouts is, the signal being replaced, 200, 250,000 replaced every 10, 15 years, a roundabout if it was built, it'd just be preserving the pavement, it wouldn't be necessarily replacing signals, and the traffic wasn't going.
Is that going to, if it goes then, is that going to be a problem for plowing for the city?
City doesn't plow 57, correct?
But they got Main Street.
Yeah, Main Street.
So, how do they come into that roundabout?
I've had a lot of complaints about plowing around.
Do that many, you can plow the whole thing off.
Yeah, you'd almost have to, so.
Get rid of all the stuff with that.
Yeah, you're going to have to.
So, what are you looking for?
Looking for...
I'm going to go back to MINDOT with, this is two thumbs up, thumbs up, maybe it's the, what she said, maybe I'll go back to it and oppose it, or thumbs down if we don't want to pursue it. The city would prefer signal at Main Street and the full roundabout at 34. That way, it'd be agreeable, too, if there's no additional cost and no delay to the project, which is putting some pressure on us.
Because I want to get that project.
Things we can work through. With that said, if that isn't possible, the mini at Main Street and the full at 34 would be potentially agreeable.
Marginally, potentially.
Quote, quote, M-A-R.
I have to really be convinced that people can cross the street, that when traffic doesn't have a stop signal or a go or a stop, the people that walk, that they're just going to stop because of the crosswalk, because I about watched kids get hit. So, traffic not stopping at that intersection, people crossing the street, I'd be very concerned for it.
Well, marginal, do the parking, paths, pedestrian movement, and then, yeah, emergency estimate.
Yep, totally agree.
Okay, thank you. You rushed out here for that, right?
Well, it's good to get some clarification, like I said, we're working this through on design, we need to keep our movements, I just wanted to bring it forward, and I'll report back next meeting.
Sounds good. Can you just give us a quick update on the east Main Street storms, where I see they got, the roads open out to the fire department on Main Street there?
Yep.
And are they on schedule, or are they doing what they're...
Yep, so they are done with the project, we're still doing a walk-through, do some final punchless stuff to wrap some things up, we have a sewer man who will cash them out of bolt-down, do some restoration stuff, and that should be about it, so that pipe is in place and operational at this point.
All the way to the creek?
All the way to the creek.
Okay.
Same thing with our water and sewer infrastructure, we replaced a portion of that as part of the project, so that'll provide some additional, potentially some additional flow, it's kind of the Marty Southeast area here that actually has one loop into it, or not a loop into it, one signal line running to it, or any railroad tracks, replace some of that, so hopefully it's a better connection for that whole area. So, that's almost completed, they can do some punchless stuff. 16th Street, same situation, I've got a road, maybe closed, they're going to work, they're going to open it here shortly.
The road closed, it's still there yesterday.
Yeah, it's kind of closed, they have some equipment there, so they're going to get some stuff out, they have some delays and some of this stuff.
There's some colder gas tank there yet last night.
Yeah, some staffing issues, so that's going to be opened up here at the end of the day, we got to do some more work out there. Same thing there, that's going to be, gravel's been degraded out, we've shaved some of the ditches, we have some turf restoration to do, and then we'll be back in the spring to pavement, do some concrete curb and gutter work out there. So, that went together pretty, pretty nice, this is the project, or street rehabilitation project, the pay-up case in a day, that's, again, done, we just got some punchless stuff to do, so luckily, kind of wrapped up everything here before the winter really set in, so.
Did we hear back from the state, have they released the funds for the disaster relief declaration that we got?
They haven't even told us about it yet.
Okay.